Opening of the City Council. Public hearing for December, I mean, December 12th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Thanks, Mike.
Number one, an ordinance amending Section 764 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Exemptions to Prohibitions on Animal Sales in Restricted Areas. Councilman Mike Williams.
As I mentioned at the introduction, approached by one of the farmer's market vendors, asking if we would look at potentially allowing a specific small type animal to be sold at the farmer's market. Olivia is here to speak on that.
Hi.
So I'm gonna defer to you, since you're the expert.
Perfect. Hi, again, my name's Olivia Graziano. I am the Hammond Farmers Market Manager. Sandy Fleener of Berry Hill Farm approached me and, of course, Mr. Mike Williams, about having small animals allowed at the farmer's market for sale. We're interested in selling things like ducklings, chicks, certain goats that, when they reach full maturity, don't get over a certain size. We're not really interested in selling horses, or cattle, or larger livestock. This is mostly what you're gonna see in like a petting zoo, things that people keep as pets, things that my small farmers may have on their farms. I'm here to answer any questions you may have for me about how we may police this, or enforce certain guidelines, things like that. Absolutely, yes, sir. So, in order to police this, I would model this set of guidelines after my current rules and regulations. I would do my research, along with my market committee, for certain, you know, rules and regulations outside of the city of Hammond, and even maybe the state of Louisiana, looking into federal stuff, on the best practices for keeping livestock in a public area. And then we would also, of course, enforce, you know, certain handling practices at the market. They shouldn't be next to prepared food, I know that. They shouldn't come from outside state lines, I know that. So they would have to follow, again, certain rules and regulations, and that paperwork is how I would enforce what they can and can't do.
Olivia, how many do you anticipate? I know it's hard to say, but, I mean, how much interest have you had? We don't, I don't know if this will turn us into a...
So I currently have 64 vendors on my rosters, give or take. That's based on the email addresses that I email weekly for the markets to take place. And I've had interest from about five or six vendors that regularly, I'm so sorry, regularly have animals available for sale. So Ms. Sandy would be one of them. I have a duck farm, a duck egg farmer, who would be interested in selling ducklings. I have some people that have chicks that are available seasonally. And I have a goat farmer, who does goat milk products, and she's brought her little pigme out for petting zoos around Easter time, and I know she's gotten some interest about them. So it's not a huge number of people, and it wouldn't happen very often outside of that spring season, when those little babies are being born.
And these will only be farm animals, no exotic animals?
Correct.
No domesticated animals?
Correct. We do a pet adoption once a month through Tangee Animal Friends, so dogs and cats and things of that nature, what you can find at a pet store, would not fall under this ordinance if it were to be passed. Okay, yeah, absolutely. On the DDD's address is 2 West Thomas Street. That's Hammond, Louisiana, 70401.
I have two questions.
Yes.
The first question is, the animals, do they have to be on this list, or is it just strictly bunnies, chicks, ducklings, and goats, and that's it? Or is that, can that be expanded beyond those four items?
So, with the help of my market committee, that's definitely what I would start with. But with the help of my market committee, if something else came to light, that someone was interested in selling, like piglets, did come up between my executive director and I, that's not something that, right off the top of my head, I would think to sell, or that there would be a need to sell, or a desire to be bought. But amongst my market committee and myself, that could be expanded in the future.
Let me address that for you, councilman.
Yeah, thanks.
Because I prepared the ordinance at Councilman Williams' request. There are exemptions from the sale of live animals, so this is an exception. This ordinance only creates exceptions for bunnies, chicks, ducklings, baby goats.
Right.
I understand.
You'd have to come back to the council if you wanted to have piglets.
I understand.
I see on you actually, you say this is all we allow to sell, and...
Understood, yeah. So to answer that question...
I want to make sure that you understand.
Yeah, as of right, as of today, absolutely, that's all that we would really need to sell.
We're referring to kids baby goats not like.
Yes.
And the second thing I have is, one of the concerns, and one of the reasons why this ordinance that we put in place to restrict the sale of animals throughout the city is because the person selling the animal may not be following the same regulations that a, let's say, a licensed person or business would have to follow to do that. And then the risk that the purchaser may take a risk, because, like, especially when you talk about animals, like dogs on the side of the road, you know, sometimes the person who breeds the dogs, then maybe they're selling a dog that's not healthy or whatever.
Not healthy, yes.
And so then that consumer gets stuck with that dog, and then, so that's one of the reasons why we put this in place.
Correct.
So how do you then protect the consumer with this, in this situation, from buying animals that are not, you know, that are healthy?
So that would fall within our rules and regulations. Like I said, within these rules and regulations, there are gonna be stipulations where they have to follow X, Y, Z state and federal guidelines to ensure that the animal is healthy. I did a little bit of research today, in fact, seeing if there were any kind of courses that just a normal person could take to get animal care certified, and I did not find anything right away, but that is something that I am still interested in doing and pursuing, so that is still on the table. And they would have to abide by, it's similar in our market, our vendor rules and regulations as well, where basically, if we have any kind of thought that they're not selling a healthy animal, even though they have stated that by signing this contract, my animals are gonna be healthy, I'm gonna take the proper steps to make sure that that is the case, we are subject to farm visitation, and we can check out the conditions and things for ourselves. And that's the same things that our farmers are subdued to when they sign off that vendor contract. If we feel like they're not growing their produce with, under the, like, if they're organic certified, and I am subject to farm visitation, to make sure that they're organic certified, so they're selling healthy produce, in that sense.
That's good. So, Andre, last thing, so we don't have to write it into this ordinance, because they already have a process in place to protect the city from that?
Well, they're a gatekeeper, just like they offer produce.
Yes.
So, they're a gatekeeper. If they're not satisfied with the animals, or the health of the animals, or the operations of the prospective vendor, they can just not allow them to participate.
Correct. And there would be clauses in there that state, you know, if you're not following this, you just wouldn't be able to sell anymore.
That answers my question, thank you.
Yes, no problem.
So Andre, just for the record, I want Olivia to understand that if this were to pass, and if it created issues that were unforeseen, it could be undone?
Yes, I understand that.
Correct.
Okay, so just keep...
And I understand that I cannot mend this in any way, yes. I understand that. Okay. Okay, that's fine.
You can make your vendors responsible.
Yeah, absolutely, that's, my gears are turning as to how I can... Okay. Yes, sir.
I think it's good that we're expanding and trying more things, so good luck to you guys.
Thank you so much.
I think the farmer's market is a huge asset. I hear a lot of compliments about it, so, you know, I'm okay with trying this, but counting on you, or whoever that farmer's market manager is, to make sure that we will follow, and it doesn't get out of hand, and we're not selling puppies and other things.
Yes, sir. Yes. I hope to make y'all proud. I will do my best. Thanks.
Any more questions? Pleasure to count. Oh, with Louise Bostick.
Louise Bostick, 112 Almond Drive. It's my understanding that this is something of a permit for the farmer's market only?
Is restricted to only the farmer's market?
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's only for the farmer's market, or any other event that's approved by the city.
Okay.
So the city would have to vet whatever that is.
So they can't go start selling them in the Albertson's...
Right.
Correct.
Or Tuesday morning.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Pleasure to counsel.
No, we're gonna...
Okay, let's begin the regular session, the City of Hammond, City Council meeting, December 12th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
I will be doing the prayer, and after that, we'll have Mr. Taquan Pittman to do the pledge of allegiance, and we will ask all veterans and active military to please render the proper salutes. Oh heavenly Father, once again, we've gathered those of us who've been elected to do the city's business, to come together and decide what is good for the city. We pray, oh heavenly Father, that we're listened, that we're fair, and that we do all that is in our power to improve the lives of each and every citizen. We pray, oh heavenly Father, for the City of Hammond, we pray for the state of Louisiana, and we pray for these United States. These in all blessings, we ask in the name of your precious Son, Jesus. To God be the glory. Amen.
Religious, with the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council reports, we would like to bring to your attention members of the steering committee for the overlay district for the Greve Park neighborhood, if you would like to come up and have anything to say. Please give your name and address.
Stella Remble Matthews, 403 Second Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana 7043. And I just want to say, as one of the steering committee members, that I am overjoyed in being in this project, with, I live one block south of Zimmer Park, and I feel that in years to come, that an overlay district would be very beneficial for the Greve Park area. So I'm looking forward to working with the committee, and doing whatever I can, and we're gonna proceed forward with that.
Thank you.
I got a couple of comments on that, Vice President, if I can. First of all, and Ms. Yvonne as well...
Sanders.
Huh? Ms. Sanders? Sorry, okay. First of all, I just want to thank you guys for being here. I know, I didn't know you guys were gonna be here tonight, but I'm glad y'all did. This overlay district, and we've talked to the council about it in administration a couple of times, and some of our staff, that it's a, it's a big deal, I think, and it's gonna add value. There's six members that you guys, that are members of the overlay district committee, the steering committee, and they're trying to move forward. And I'm glad to see you guys sitting next to Ms. Bostick, because we've talked about it on several occasions, that she would be a huge help to support, and helping the committee understand the size of the tasks that you guys are taking on. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight, and I hope that the council, throughout the course of 2018, will support you guys, as we try to figure this out, because I agree with you, I think that if we are able to make, to do the things we want to do in the park, I think that Zimmer, Greve Park is gonna play a critical role in the success of that whole entire residential rebirth over in your neighborhood. So, good luck, and hopefully the council, the NCC's back there as well. I know he's planning to support to help you guys as well, so anything we can do from the council, at least from my perspective, we want to definitely do that to help you guys. I have some reports, have you got any council reports?
Okay.
A couple of things, you know, one thing that we talked about to the council at the last Geneseter meeting, is I talked with Andre about this as well, and he would think that we can do this. We just want to go ahead, if it's okay with the council, it's a pleasure to counsel. I'm gonna plan to put on the next agenda, the elections for council positions for president offices next year. The ordinance, the ordinance says that when you see the new council, you have to do that in January, and then you have to do that annually, you know, after that point. So, we think that that language allows us to do it in December versus right into January, where it's a little bit more of an awkward time, it's just one week, one extra meeting. So if it's a pleasure to council, what we'll probably have on the next agenda, is a chance to go ahead and elect offices for the 2018 year, so that'll be out of the way, so hopefully that the news, the new offices be able to get seated and be done in over with. So, I'm willing to do that for the next meeting, so I just want you, I wanted the council to be aware of that, so we'll have it on the agenda. If you choose to vote against, or want to wait for another meeting, you can always vote against it, but we just go ahead and plan to do that, and those officers will take their role at the first meeting in January, okay? And second, I mentioned the capital projects for, you know, the capital projects, is one thing that I wanted to have a conversation about with the administration, and have it with the public as well. And I even feel more compelled to understand it now, after looking at the 31 page, I think it was, report that you guys sent us on the audit, you know, just trying to kind of have a good understanding about capital projects. And how do we, as a council, get reasonable information that fits into our understanding? I mean, I looked at P&Ls every single day, you know, but the P&L that we have for the city is beyond, is something I have to become more and more familiar with. So I'm trying to figure out how we can get the language or the information in a way that we can be, we can, we can keep up with our projects that we have, especially with us having a three-year sunset of some of the projects. You know, it's hard to get information to know where we are, in a format that allows us to manage it. So, again, I'm, I know we brought this up, I brought this up about six months ago, and I saw some reports, but still, there's no real process for us, at least for me, to use so that we can manage these capital projects on an ongoing basis for the life of the project. So I'm asking the administration, again, if we can create some type of a report that allows the council to have either quarterly, some type of an update on where we are on capital projects that are ongoing through the three, or through the life cycle of that project. If we can, if we can do that, that'd be hugely beneficial. Yeah, so you're, I mean, I didn't know you were, so... Oh, you said something out today?
Yeah.
It's hyperlinked.
Yeah, well, I didn't know about that till yesterday afternoon, so it was hard to do yesterday. First of all, my answer to your question is, number one, I may be totally wrong, but my interpretation is that you appropriate the funds, and the administration manages the project. So all you gotta do is call me and say, where are we on a certain project? I know where most of them are, I don't know where all of them are, Webb's handling most of the drainage. But anyway, I did prepare one like this, similar to this, in August. You asked for it, I gave it, and here's one for December. So, I'm not taking it personally, but I don't. There's only a certain, the flexibility we have is that we stay within the budget, and we follow the direction of the administration, and we interact with what we're doing. For instance, we did some drainage work, I mean, some street work, early in the fiscal year, because we had a great street contract, if you remember Byron Talbot, and we let him go do the rest of the street work. Typically, we don't start our capital projects until the first of the year, because sales tax and property taxes don't flow in till pretty much November, December. That's a cash flow issue, it doesn't always have to be that way. Occasionally, there's something that's more pressing, and we push forward with it. But if you look at this, it's hyperlinked, and I got more copies, you want a paper copy? Anybody want a paper copy?
Three pages.
Yeah, I like, I mean, that's whatever. Yeah, so, I mean, can I just interject for a second? It's, I hope you don't, you don't take it personal, I mean, I'm just asking a basic question.
No, you asked about managing, you want to be able to manage, and I don't really think that your position, you absolutely said, the council needs to manage these projects, and I don't really believe I need to work for six different people. I don't mind working for you from the standpoint of getting a project done, but management...
If I use that term, I use that term out of, I mean, maybe I just said that by mistake. I have no desire to manage the projects. I just would like to be updated on a regular and consistent basis on the projects, and in a format that is comfortable for me, you know, so I can look at that and say, okay, these are projects that are in District 4, and these projects were, these projects were adopted or approved in 2015, and then simply, this is the project name, complete or not complete, and this listing, that's really what I want to know.
Well, that's kind of what I'm doing here, I'm kind of showing you where we are in the process, this, if you look at the first page, first, of course, this is the same six categories we appropriate for.
Chuck, you listen, the point is, the projects go through more than just one year. The projects go through three years.
Right.
So, if I want to...
Well, there's nothing in 15 left, but there is 16 left, and it's on this list. If you give me a chance to go through, we'll go through 16, which is Timberlane.
I don't necessarily want to go through it in the council meeting, that wasn't my intent. My intent was to have something that I could review, so I could have it in my briefcase and say, okay, here are my projects, and here's where they are. It's really just that simple. I mean, that's all I'm asking, and I'm asked for, you know, I think we sat down a while back, and tried to come up with a format that we can use, but it's just, I just haven't, haven't, and I like to get it maybe like on a quarterly basis, just personally.
That's not a problem. Not a problem.
But if you want to go over it, you're more than welcome.
I would just like to show you how it's read. This is six categories, water, sewer, sidewalk, drainage, streets, parks, and bridges. So sidewalk and sewer, there's no 15 projects or 16 projects, so there's the water and sewer progress. The completed project was Whitmar, which the mayor asked me to accelerate that, because we had such an uproar from the Whitmar people in the last six to nine months, as you're well aware, they came in here, filled the room three or four times about the sewer and drainage, and yada, yada, yada. So, we did accelerate that, we got bids on, we have completed the SSES, which is line F1, on the first page. When we get the SSES report, they give us a long list of recommended repair work. So the repair work, which is the next line, is under engineering design now, we're about to put out a bid for that, I expect it to go out in February. Chevy well is being done by electrical engineer, I don't know exactly where he is, he's probably a third finish. I told him we weren't gonna do anything till the first of the year, maybe he's waiting till January, I will find out. It's M&amp;E Electric, this is one of those things guys have been wanting to do at Chevy well. That's B1 and G2, $420,000. Then if you look at sidewalks, I do have one, there was one sidewalk appropriation, $20,000. Typically, that's done in-house. I assume you would have to contact administration if you have a specific area, maybe that's the process now. But at the bottom of this list, I have what an NA means, if you're, say, why, you got, why has Chuck got NA on there? On the second page, if you look at drainage, we have, I guess, eight drainage projects, they're not numbered very well, are they? But anyway, there's about eight projects. The only one that's been finished is East Hanson, South Cypress. We accelerated the completion of that project because of the completion of Andre Terrio's building on the corner of Cypress and Morris, if you're familiar with that brand-new building. We, they want to do some drainage work to tie their parking lot drainage in, because their building was flooding. So that one's part of the drainage was done under a change order. A lot of this other stuff was added by change order, and you approved that change order in August. But the general contractor that had our last year's drainage project started trying to negotiate his unit prices, and as Andre can tell you, when you bid a project, you have unit prices, and he cannot change his unit prices under that contract. I don't like doing it, it's shady, I don't like it when he says $35 a foot, I don't want to charge $45, because it's a harder job. I mean, that's, I just told him, if you're not gonna use unit prices, we will cut this off and move it into the 18 drainage project. So all those things that say February 18 are in the new drainage contract. If you look on the next line, that's what you asked, you'd asked me several times, actually, about Timberlane. If you look down, I have three asterisks about Timberlane. First of all, Sanders, General Patton, Brandy, and Industrial were all supposed to be done in this August adding, and it's now dead and moving into 18. I just told you the reason why. So we had some 17 and 18 combination, they're all gonna be in 18 now, simply because the general contractor would not agree to add them with his contract prices, he wanted additional money. Timberlane, we lost the funding, or at least they denied funding for it, we took it to the state. The DOTD has met with us, they have approved what we want to do, to cross from Timberlane to Brandy Lane, crossing Old Baton Rouge Highway, and taking that crossing out, but they said they're not gonna pay for any of it. And we expect them to pay 75, and we pay 25. So we had $100,000 set aside for that, it's about a $350,000 project, and now we have to come up with additional money. One prospect was to put it into the bond, possible bond issue, and the mayor said, this is not big enough, let's don't fund this over 20 years, let's just appropriate the next capital appropriation. That's the council's pleasure, I will recommend it when it comes up, because we need it. So we are not quite finished with the surveys.
So what happens to that money that's already been allocated for it?
It's, it's, it's a 16, it'll work for three years.
So where is that on here?
What's a 16, it's, I just didn't put the number down. Timberlane should say $95,000 next to it.
It has zero by itself.
Well...
But again, that's just the point I'm making, it's, I'm just, I'm not trying to be...
I mean, I could put the numbers in for 16.
I'm not trying to be, you know, you know, we, we have a role, we, we're just trying to get information, so we know what we're doing. I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point, but again, this is what we talked about, you know, it's, I'll give you another example, like park improvements.
Say again? I didn't hear you.
Park improvements. I know they're in the park improvements budget, there's about $35,000 in the budget in Lincoln Park, but it's not on this report, you know, so where is it?
Well, I'm not doing, I don't do any of the parks, so I don't know the answer to the parks.
But, so, and that's why I really wasn't coming, asking you, Chuck, as a contractor with the city, I was really asking the administration, they create some type of a format that would be suitable, so we can keep it with our parks, because like right now, under five park improvements, we have more than $50,000 of park improvement, ongoing projects in the city.
No doubt about it. I'm sure there is.
Right, but it's not even anywhere on this report.
Well, I'm not, I don't handle it, yeah. I'm not gonna manage that project.
That's why I never came to you, I asked you, I'm asking the administration to provide a report.
Well, I told Lacey I'd take care of it, and she probably thought I was gonna do the parks too, but I don't have any information. Well, I have, I don't have anything in the dollar column. He said anything in the dollar column. I didn't put the individual dollars on.
Again, I'll just, again, all I'm asking, and it's, I really don't want to be, it's not a debatable thing, all I'm asking is of council, and I think we have a right, I have a right as a councilperson, to ask the administration to provide, provide me, and if the rest of the council agrees or disagrees, with some type of format where we can, we can actually see the projects that are ongoing throughout the course of a three-year span, so we can manage, and that's why I said manage, our projects through our constituents. That's my point, not manage the project to get it done, but to make sure that my constituents, when I have to pick up the phone and say, hey Lamar, where are we on this project? I want to be able to know, well, we get a report every quarter, here's the last report I got, let me answer your question, and I can move on. Versus, let me follow up, let me call, and it takes you two, and then it's just a long process. We could simplify it, where we can provide more accurate information to our constituents, because those are the people who want to know what's going on in our district, and that's all I want to know. And not that I don't care about the rest of the districts, but I'm really concerned about just where am I, where are we with the funding that the council approved for the districts, and the status of all those projects? That's really all I want to know. So if we can simplify that, and get it in a format, Mayor Pinnipinto, if you can help us, help me at least get that, I would be more than, I'd be more than happy to be able to share that with my constituents.
And as we've done in the past, the phone calls, and asking us where we are with projects, you always get your answers. So, that being said, there's no problem with doing that. Very good example, it's stated right here, with your bill, last bulkhead repairs. Where are we in that process?
Just written down right here.
How many times have I called you on the bulkhead?
Well, I've told you every time, it's gonna be done in drainage 18. What else do I want to tell you?
So I get a phone call from the constituent, and I call his name.
I talk to him regularly, I'm good friends with him. I have his cell phone, he has my cell phone.
He sends me a letter and email, I want to know, where are we? So I'm just trying to say, hey, it would be nice to be able to tell...
I'm answering you, how many times do you want me to answer? It's gonna be in the fiscal 18 drainage, which will be at the first of the year, February of 18, it's now in black and white, February of 18. I've told him the same thing.
I appreciate it.
As far as when it's gonna be done, and I will tell you this, so you can tell your constituents, when we bid a job with 25 different locations for drainage, we cannot designate the order in which the job's accomplished, or we become irresponsible for the completion date. I know you think that's bull.
No, I understand.
A lot of people think it's bull, but it really isn't. We've been that route. We've had that problem, and the contract takes two years, and they say, "You told me where to go." You're now, it'll take forever.
I understand a hundred percent.
So, I, I do think, I know Villa West will be done. I know that the work that's on this list will be done. It will be led in February, and it'll probably be a nine-month job or an eight-month job, and whatever web decides the duration is. Typically, we have $100,000 a month. So, if it's an $800,000 contract, we're given eight months. That's kind of a rule of thumb. But I do know when they'll bid and when we'll award, assuming they're not out of budget. And unfortunately, if you wait till February, I'll probably give you a lot of better information. Right now, I don't have the information. I, I am unhappy about Timberlane. We waited two years. He went to RPC every day for two, every month for two years, and all of a sudden, this summer, it's kind of dead in the water, and I'm saying, you know, we could have sought more, and, you know, we're all frustrated about it. This is the mayor, that we need to do something down there.
Madam Vice President, I have a question.
Yes.
Chuck, is there, is there something that whenever, I know that whenever you bring us the projects, let's, I'm just going to pick one randomly, okay? Let's, drainage improvements on South Chestnut. Louise would be happy to hear about that.
I've told her, I told her last summer it's coming up.
Whenever we discuss the, and approve the contract, is there something that I, that we miss that gives the completion date or the contract date? Is that something, is that something that we should be looking for?
You, we, we have that data. We don't typically give it to you. You're, you're right about that. I don't offer that normally.
So, what I-
We award the contract, and you don't hear until there's a change order. We probably need to start putting that in there.
Would that satisfy Councilman Marshall? I, I understand, I don't want to get into the situation of what he's looking for from the administration. I'm simply talking about what you provide to us as part of your contract stuff. If there was a, this is a 120-day project, and I've learned that from my job, looking at a contract, that, because I was wondering, why is it not started yet? And then I go look at the contract and see that they have 120 days, so they could do it in the last seven days.
Right.
That, that information, I didn't know if we weren't missing.
I could add another column, but projected completion on here, that might not hurt. But I have to get a schedule.
I was trying not to make too much more work for you.
No, no, they have to provide-
If there was a spot that we were not seeing.
At a pre-construction conference, which Lacy and the mayor typically come to. The contractor comes to my office, we sit down, we go over to contract, he hands us the schedule. That's the schedule he's supposed to follow. We don't tell him the schedule, but then I do know pretty accurately when he thinks that portion of the project will be finished. If it's the wastewater treatment plant, it's only one location. That's not a problem, but when I'm all over town with drainage or sewer, it does become a problem. And I know, I hear from people, you would be surprised, the calls we get, and we try to honor them, and, you know, our, our guys are on the job. Most of my men know the people in Hammond, but I'm assuming that would help your cause out too, because I think it's a valid point. I mean, I hear you. You're trying to make, get people answers, and you don't like being in the dark.
That's really all I was saying. It wasn't meant to-
That's why I tried to make this a little more detail, because I know you said you wanted simple, but you really don't want it simple. You want it detailed, and I think that's what you should get. You should get pretty good detail, and I'll try to bring that up to date on a regular basis.
Add the expected completion date, please.
And a projected completion date. It's a good point. Problem is, I'm going to put them all at the very end until we get a contract. So, if I have a job starting in March, we're going to award in February, starting March is nine months, you're going to see December 18 till I see the general contractor's construction schedule.
How many jobs do we, I don't want to go longer, but I'm going to have one more question. How many jobs do we sunset because they never get done at all?
It's rare. I would, I don't remember any, actually.
So, like an example, this Brandy Lane project. We approved $100,000 for that in 2015, whatever. If it doesn't meet the deadline of three years-
It goes back to the general fund.
It goes back to the general fund.
That's correct.
So, then that project has to get back on the capital.
The, theoretically, re-appropriated. That's correct. We have, we have re-appropriated occasionally, but usually it's permitting issues.
Yeah, and, and so now, I expect that every councilperson would be able to keep up with their, with their project.
There's, there's no council, now, I don't know about parks. You're probably right on parks. There's no 2015 capital projects, with the exception of Timberlane, that has not been done.
And that's what I've really been concerned about, because we deal with that every once in a month.
Hey, it was, I thought it was worth the gamble to get a grant, and obviously, it was not. I don't particularly like these grants anyway, because typically, you've got to jump through so many hoops, it's not even worth the effort. You don't have to print that, because I don't want FEMA and LCDBG and everybody getting on me, but they're, they're not worth the trouble.
I don't agree with that.
I know you don't.
There's a lot of noise that we've done a lot of projects with grants, and the millions.
That's true.
But certain communities are vulnerable to the grants, and, and so this particular community that's needed this, this, that has this overflow of where Brandy, or not Brandy, but when, when Timberlane floods every time it rains, you know, I can't keep going and say, "Hey, we're waiting on this grant," and, you know, we're waiting for-
Ms. Sarah can't get money for-
I'm telling you for two years.
There's one house that floods. There's been no damage reduction. You can't demonstrate damage reduction for one house. Doesn't justify the expenditure of $350,000, but I do believe we need to fix it. That's called flood control. There is statewide flood control money. We've been that route, but you have to show the damage reduction at least equal to the amount of the construction cost. And that's one house.
Because that's the situation where we're taking over roads by a contractor that developed a neighborhood or a street that doesn't have the work.
I'm in that grandfather there. Whitmar's the same way. Whitmar came in in 1986. It had problems. We've got water, we put sewer. They had no water. We ran the city water to them. They had no sewer. We ran city sewer to them. Now, we're fixing the bad lines. We put it in the 60s and 70s. You know, they're 50 years old, but when they ran it, nobody asked their engineering evaluation of it, not that I would have been able to see it without a full-blown SSES. Pine Hill's the same way. You know, we, Pine Hill came in, they were, we had no streets, no water, no drainage. We're now doing streets. We've done the sewer. We've done the water. Water and sewer, at no expense to the individuals. We have not done the drainage. It's on the, it's on the books for a couple of years out, but you've got a good point. But you're here to serve your constituents. They are constituents. I hear you, and we're moving forward with it. I didn't editorialize on it, but I will give you a better update that gives you completion date in the future. Is this, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Could you please give your name and address to the secretary?
Joyce Yvonne Sanders, 210 East Green Street, Hammond. I've been calling about the drainage since 2002. I documented it every time I called, and a street was put in by my house after I was building on Mary's Alley, which was just a pathway. It wasn't a street. And right after I built my house, they put a road in, a concrete road. And I've been having problems with the drainage since I've been there, and I've been there almost, what, 35 years? I've been in my house in, uh, 1979 when we started building. Anyway, my problem is now, I've been calling, trying to get help about the drainage. Nobody has done anything. They've been constantly building up Green Street, but it's dropping down on Mary's Alley. The water's coming in down on me. They came in, what, about a year ago, and dug a little hole or something? But anyway, it has caused problems now to my structure, because I can't wash, because where my water lines go to the road, whatever they did, pipes have collapsed. I talked to several people with the city department. Nobody's doing anything about my problem. So, this has been going on for all these years. Nobody's complaining but me, because I'm the only one it's affecting. So, it's a problem there that needs to be fixed, because it's causing me problems with my dwelling now. I think I talked with you-
So, you're talking about drainage or sewers?
Yeah.
You're talking about when you wash your clothes?
Yeah, because my line runs straight to the street from where my washer is, which is right where they dug that hole at. So, I'm having a problem now, because those pipes collapsed. I think I came and talked with you, and you sent a few guys out to look at it.
The aquifer went up, and that's when they dug the hole and checked it.
Well, it has caused a problem. And right now, as I speak, there's water sitting on that street, because every time it rains, it floods. I keep sandbags on the side of my house to keep the water from coming in. To be honest, when that street was built, part of my property is that street. No one came to me, talked to me about using the property or anything. This was back when Debbie Port was mayor, and I think her husband was the one that did the street. It was never discussed with me. So, now I'm having problems, and I can't seem to get any help.
Well, from what I understand, there must not be much fall on that line to drain from your property. So, that may be another case of how to completely do what we did at Pine Hill and redo what was done with the road 40 years ago. So, God will be back out there tomorrow to give me an answer, and so will Robert Morgan, who's drainage.
Yeah, I've talked with him about the drainage. Matter of fact, he knows a problem, because each time I talk with him, and I've been talking to him for years, he tells-
What does this comment do? What does this standard line?
Uh, he knows a problem, but they don't have the funds to fix it. That's the statement I get from him.
I'll have him both in my office tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Put your phone on, please, Charles.
Uh, 985-345-6089. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have the 2016, 2017 audit report. So, Kushner, LaGrays, LaGrays.
Thank you. I'm Ernie Jelpe with Audit Firm, Akshay LaGrays, and we have completed the audit report for the City of Hammond for the year ended June 30 of 2017. I believe everyone received an electronic copy. It's required to be submitted to the legislative auditor, no later than December 31, and we will be submitting that and meeting that deadline. I'd like to, if I may, just take a minute to point out, a couple of items are included in the financial statements. First, on the first three pages is our audit opinion, which is a modified, unmodified opinion, which means that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. It's a clean opinion and the best opinion you can receive. On pages four through 14 is the management discussion and analysis, sometimes called the MDNA. And as you, before you would go through the report, I would suggest that you start with the MDNA. It gives you a good summary of the current year operations, as well as a comparison of 2016 to 2017. If you do compare the net position, you'll see that the city's net position increased by approximately $5 million. However, if you look at just the general fund and the general fund fund balance, that did decrease by about $1,003, bringing the fund balance of the general fund down to Now, this is at June 30, 2017. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend that you have in your general fund fund balance about two years of general fund expenditures. And if you did a calculation there, that would approximate about $4 million, so-
Two months.
Two months. I'm sorry. Yeah, my mistake. Thank you for pointing that out. If you did that, you would be looking at about $4 million in fund balance. So, your general fund fund balance is a little on the low side. I would suggest that you kind of monitor that and see if you can get it back up. You started off with about $3 million, and because of the excess revenues over expenses for 2017, it's, it's down to 1.7 now. We also issued our opinion on compliance with uniform guidance, and I'm happy to report that, and the uniform guidance is the actual federal grants that you were kind of talking about earlier. Happy to report there were no findings or no findings of non-compliance with uniform guidance. We also had to issue a report on internal controls. We did have one finding related to internal controls, which is reported on page 103 in our financial statements. That related to documentation related to the credit cards. There was no misuse of credit cards, but we did make some suggestions where documentation could be improved so far as original receipts. And also, there was a small $122, I think, of finance charges that were incurred, but the administration has gone back and gotten a credit for that, and has also gotten a documentation to support the credit cards, and has made some written procedures that have strengthened the internal controls. So, that has been corrected. Councilman Marshall, you asked me before the meeting about capital projects, similar to the discussion y'all just had. Our report, we have to follow the GASB format and presentation, and that requires us to put the capital projects all in one fund, the Capital Projects Fund. So, you're not going to find the detail, I think, that you're looking for in capital projects in our audit report. So, that's why, when you're looking for it, I know you said you were having trouble finding that, you're not going to see it in, in our report, because we, we can't give that detail of capital projects. It's all in one fund. So, in summary, the, the city obtained a clean opinion on the financial statements. You had no findings related to uniform guidance, and you had one finding related to internal control, which the administration has already corrected. I'd like to thank Mayor Penapinto, Lacy, Finance Director Seda, and all of our staff for helping us in our, performing our audit procedures. And I'd like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to provide the audit. Any, any questions?
Tell me, how long have y'all been doing the audit for us? Again, I don't recall. Is this the second, third year?
It's, I want to say it's the fourth year, fourth or fifth.
How, how long has the, the recommendation of the general fund balance been, the GFO, I think you referred to it? How, how long has that been a recommendation?
Oh, I, I can't tell you. It's been a long time. I can't tell, I can't tell you exactly when they started making that recommendation.
If you want me to, I can look it up tomorrow.
It's not necessary.
It is long, and it's on the web. It's actually on the GFOA's website, and it will have it. It has a date, so I could probably, like tomorrow, like I said, look it up for you if you wanted me to.
No, that's, that's-
It's been a while, though.
I, I've known about it for a while in, in other capacities, but I, I don't, I think this is only the second year that I can recall. I don't recall much. I can't remember how, how long we've been dealing with y'all folks. So, it shows you my memory, but I, I only vividly remember two years that being a, a vocal recommendation. So, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Because we do fight for money, and maintaining a $4 million general fund balance is, in my opinion, not real realistic, so. is, in my opinion, not real realistic, so.
Yeah, I, I know that would be hard, I, and I just wanted to point out, since it did decrease this year, and if you did have next year the same situation, you'd really be getting, your fund balance would be getting in a critical position. So, you know, it's, it's, you wanna have some savings that will allow you to be able to fund the general fund.
Listen, I don't, I don't wanna get into debate here, but I, I, I've kept up with the budget for quite a long time, and I don't know that we've ever maintained a ending fund balance, or started, let me say that, let me, I don't know that we've ever started a year with an ending fund balance that was very favorable, and I've never heard the word "critical" be used in that situation, so I'm just a little confused, I guess.
Well, I, I was saying, if next year-
I understand.
-if you had another deficit in your general fund fund balance, the balance would be a lot smaller, it'd be one point three million.
I understand. We've, I can say, we've had some-
What was, what was the main reason for the-
Much smaller in, in beginning fund balances that, I've never heard that.
Well, we had some one-time expenditures this year, am I right, Lacy? Didn't we use the, did we move the funding for the, the, I think, to pay the settlement for the-
This fiscal year, he's talking about last fiscal year.
Oh, so, so, so are we gonna be in the same situation again, where we, because didn't we reduce the ending fund balance to pay for the, for the police chief?
Yeah, I don't know where the fund balance stands right, right now.
So is that gonna, is that in this year? Is that, that's gonna impact this year? So, are we anticipating the same problem again this year?
Fund balance right now is about eight hundred, general fund balance probably a hundred and fifty, eight hundred.
So we're going from three million to one point seven to eight hundred thousand?
We balance the general fund by transferring sales tax.
But November, December, January is our months where we make up generally the, the sales tax for our fund, for our budget.
Yep. So I'm just suggesting you keep an eye on the, the general fund fund balance.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, sir. None of them, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Any reports, Mayor?
Well, as we all know, we had the snowstorm, many people loved it, but thirty-three, thirty-four hundred people did not. They were out of power for a substantial period of time. If you notice Bahavi Lobby, we had other crews that came in to help up to restore the power. We were down to eighty-eight as of this morning, but everyone in the city of Hammond, just outside of four oh one, four oh, seven oh four oh one and seven oh four, three area codes are all back to power, so that's been restored, thank goodness. We closed Friday because of the storm. It snowed about five and a half inches in Hammond. Beautiful snow. A lot of people had a good time in the parks and in their yards, making snowmen that, for this time, did not have dirt and leaves in them, beautiful white snow. That being said, the Christmas lights are lit, the park is open, the business, we're adding another week until December twenty-third, the train will be running for the children, which has been well-attended so far. It's running six to nine on Friday, and five to nine Saturday and Sunday, so please go out and enjoy the train and park and all the lights throughout the city of Hammond. Very thankful for all the merchants who have been putting wreaths and lights in their storefronts to help show the Christmas spirit, and this is my report.
Mayor, my building's lit, I would just like to say thank you for Christmas. It risked my life, there was still ice on the roof when I got up there.
Recognitions of, at this time, we'd like to recognize any new businesses. Is there any new businesses that would like to be recognized? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we would like to get a motion on the acceptance of the minutes of November twenty-eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Throw call.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, resolutions, old business having none, new business, number one.
Number one, a resolution one, accepting as the fiscal agent for, and on behalf of the Hammond Downtown Development District, a Louisiana Main Street lighter, quicker, cheaper grant award of four thousand dollars, for which the DDD will match at least one thousand, to relocate the Francis G Stewart monument, and to authorize the mayor and/or his designated to sign grant documents. Charles brochure.
Good evening. This is really just an attempt to get everybody on the same page. The city has long functioned as the fiscal agent for the DDD. This is a situation where the mayor needs to sign the grant agreement, so I wanted to bring it to the council, put it here in, in simple summarized terms, what, what's being done. It's a four thousand dollar grant with a minimum one thousand dollar match. The monument that's being relocated is the Francis G Stewart monument, that's the monument that's between Locoretta and the DDD, and my understanding is, part of the reason it's being relocated, will be relocated over by the train station to that little pocket park that was developed about a year ago, is to make room for the pavilion that's coming. So it's a DDD project, the DDD will be responsible for the match, again, at least a thousand dollars. The mayor does have to sign on behalf of the DDE, because we are their fiscal agent, again, just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page. Chelsea couldn't be here tonight, she had another engagement, otherwise she would've been, so that's why I'm presenting. Any questions?
The latest rendering I saw yesterday at Towne Prestoria's office was that the monument would be moved to the southeast side of the DDD building, like there next to the road.
That is correct. That, that grant was initially applied for, we had been talking about moving the Market Pavilion to the train station area, but now that we are staying in the same location, we have decided to move that Stewart monument up to the front. As far as I know, there's no issues as far as getting the grant, even though it's being moved to a different location.
Well, you got an update.
I did, just for the record, and I told them I would mention it, I had one citizen call me who is opposed to moving the monument, and is opposed to put the former's market in that only green space that we have between First County Bank and Lees, apparently, doesn't think it's a good idea to cement it, I just told them I would put it on the record, so.
Okay. I'll make sure, have, have you spoken to Chelsea yet? If not, I'll make sure I relay that to her.
Is there a reason they were opposed?
They didn't think they should move the monument, because they thought it was disrespectful, and they didn't think they should, we should, or the DDD should cement the green space, because it was only green space between First County Bank and Lees, and he felt as though it would make cause trouble with drainage.
Except for the Kate Square Park?
How finna say?
On Thomas Street.
That's on railroad, though.
Yeah, so I'm just putting it on the record.
I'll relay that to Chelsea. Again, our role really is just as, as the fiscal agent, I just wanna make sure it was-
I kinda explained it to them, that we really, you know-
And I've offered, you know, to assist Chelsea, I think this might be one of the first times she's working on a grant, particularly this grant, and any assistance that my office can provide in terms of reviewing reports and, and whatnot, well, we're happy to do that.